All right, well, good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I'm going to lead you all in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Tyler's going to lead us in the invocation. If you'll stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
Just pray.
Heavenly Father, we're just thankful for the blessings you've given our community. Pray for continued blessings. Ask that this commission represents our citizens very well today and make good decisions. Best to please be with everyone in the audience. Safe travels, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome to our October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. I will call this meeting to order. We can do roll call.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert. James David. Dee Dee Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And any questions on the minutes from the previous month?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Second. Second by Mr. Peters. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. There are two tabled items, actually three tabled items, that we will not hear this evening. One of them is 19-02 Dakota Riggins, 2233 Stockton Avenue. There is a conditional use, C-19, 19 Andrew and Karen Morris, 247 Combs Lane. That is tabled. And then we have an adjustment, B-19-45, again Andrew and Karen Morris, 247 Combs Lane, variance for deviation. Those three items are tabled but will not be heard this evening. Next item that we have is a tabled item from previous month, W-19-06 Marcy Kennard, 8159 East Brown Roads, the waiver for sidewalk requirements presented by Marcy Kennard.
Nothing like going first.
I told her she had to stay the entire meeting as well.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm not staying. And I'm going to do this fast so we can all get out of here. I'm going to stick to the script also so we can get out of here. My name's Marcy Kennard. I live at 8159 East Brown Road with my husband named Kyle and our three boys. We have approximately 50 acres of land, about 30 acres located in Springdale and the other 20 is located in Cave Springs. The 30 acres located in Springdale consist of five fenced acres, which includes the driveway, house, and the utility barn. The remaining 25 acres is located in a flood plain that cross creek divides the land. Currently, we live in the original farmhouse, which will be taken down after the completion of our new house, only a few yards away from where we live now. This is expected to occur in about 45 days. Our family has run cattle on this property for about 25 years, dating back to when I was in high school. We now operate our cattle business as an LLC, and we do not intend to develop this property, not only because it's in the flood plain, but also because we have three boys that we would love to learn the business, you know, just in case their professional golf, baseball career doesn't pan out. But anyway, that's it. That's all I'm asking for.
All right. Staff comments?
Well, I don't normally support waivers of sidewalks, but this one's kind of out in the middle of where, so I would support granting a waiver for the sidewalk requirement.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
I just want to say, normally I wouldn't do the sidewalk thing, but I think if it were to come up and be subdivided at some point, that time...
I can guarantee it will not.
...I'd do a sidewalk. And I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
I have a motion by Mrs. Haney. I have a second.
What's the length of the sidewalk? What's the length of the frontage on? It would be on Ziegler and on our road? Do we know what that length is?
No, sir. Do not.
You know what your frontage is? Okay.
That part, that piece of the land is about 25 acres.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second by Mr. Covert? Oh, sorry, Compton.
It has been a long day.
Compton.
Sorry.
Compton. Oh, you see. Covert. Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Now, I had told her that this will be City Council.
It goes to council on, not even far enough along to know.
Eight?
Twenty-nine. Twenty-second. Council is the eighth and the twenty-second of October.
Okay.
So it goes to council on the twenty-second.
Okay. And I should be there for that. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
All right.
Is that it?
That's it.
Done.
Awesome. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Good luck, everyone.
Not that bad on there.
That's pretty funny.
All right. The next tabled item is large-scale 19-19 Patent Industrial Park, South 412 East at the Y and east side of Long Street, presented by Blue &amp; Associates.
I guess I got here just in time. Georgia D.C. with Blue &amp; Associates, representing the Patent Industrial Complex.
Okay. Staff comments?
Please provide a copy of the reference access easement document. The proposed drive is shown exceeds the maximum width per city of Springdale standards. Do you have an access easement for using that access off of Cargill?
That's on our property. They have an access easement through our property. So typically, we're, from what I understand, we're usually able to use our home property.
Okay. The very access point, but you're showing that goes off your property. I'm not sure how this driveway's going to work. Can you explain it to us?
So, our original intent was to actually have two driveways coming into that property separated, but due to access management standards, those two driveways would ended up, the Cargill or that driveway that...
That's Cargill, isn't it?
Yeah. That Cargill existing driveway is actually going through our property. He needs, with this being an industrial property, he needs, you know, the bigger 67-foot trucks being able to maneuver in through there. So instead of actually just having just one entrance into this property, the way that we came up with a solution was to tie the existing Cargill driveway into ours, and that way have the two points of access into the property that our property owner's needing for his development.
Okay. Do you have a copy of that access easement that Cargill has?
No, but we can probably get it. It's listed and recorded, and I think we have it shown on there. But do I have it with me? No, but we can bring it.
Well, I don't think it's shown on the plat either, that there is one. Why is it that you didn't just put a straight-in driveway on this corner, because of the distance between the two?
Yeah, we were only going to have like 20 feet between the two driveways. We didn't think that would be enough. We thought it'd be a better idea to kind of tie the two together. Kind of shared driveway. He doesn't mind a straight driveway if we're accepting of that.
Aaron? Is Aaron back there?
Yeah.
Can you come and address a couple of these issues you and I talked about this morning of a possible... We have one drawn up for you right there. Let me do the rest of the comments while we're getting ready to do that. Provide perimeter landscaping per Chapter 56 and provide completion of foundation landscaping for dumpster enclosures at the right side. I don't believe there are any engineering comments unless somebody back there from engineering knows otherwise. No engineering comments, guys?
It's pretty...
Any engineering comments on this one?
No.
Okay. I mean, this narrows it down to a 40-foot drive, takes it... Oh, okay. I mean, that is one possible solution we looked at, which might make it function a little bit better.
I don't particularly have an issue with that, but that's something that we would have to take up with Cargill and kind of just make sure that they're on board with it.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to get both property owners' agreement for that. The problem is, when they leave it the way we had it, it busts a couple of ordinance for like buffering of the landscape between. You can't just pave up to your parking lot like your property line. The drive access goes across the property line. It's wider. As you can see on that one measurement, it's over 50 feet wide if I just left it the way it was. So, and usually the widest we can go is 40 feet. So, I mean, this is one solution that we came up with as staff to try to propose to them, and it would be better for both parties if they're agreeable to let the trucks come out that way. We just can't have a wide-open driveway with a bunch of big trucks coming in and out from two different developments that don't have some kind of agreement. It's just something, you know, it just doesn't work out that way, so. But we'll just work with them on that if they can do that. I mean, but this is one of the comments that's going to be remaining until we get a good solution on the actual development.
Ed, do you have some comments, too?
You guys don't have enough water? How are they going to address that?
We have to do it at the mic.
We can't... I'm sorry. You got... My man's still with the building department. You don't have enough water on this project unless you sprinkle the buildings?
We're going to bring water in. We're going to connect to that existing line there and kind of loop it around.
You're going to loop it to where? All the way back around to Thompson?
If you can come in and speak to them through the mic.
Yeah. That's a six-inch dead-in main. There's a green top hydrant there. That's going to give you 1,500 gallons per minute. So any design that would bring, you know, the 2,200 gallons that we'd need for those larger buildings would have to be... We'd have to see the theoretical on that.
Sure.
But you would almost have to loop it all the way back to Robinson to get that flow, I would think, or make that line bigger, one or the other.
Have you had any conversations with Springdale Water about?
Not about looping it all the way back over there, but we were going to make the connections there and add, you know, extend that line and add additional fire hydrants off that existing line connection that was there.
That existing line's only going to give you 1500 gallons per minute. You can't... By looping it, you're still not going to get any more water.
Well...
You'll get better access, you just won't get more water.
We'll get a flow test done, and that way we'll have an idea of what kind of flow...
That's their green hydrant, but yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. That's why I saw the green hydrant and I went, "It don't look good."
Okay.
Follow him.
Any questions or comments in the audience?
Yes, sir.
If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
I'm Tim Olson with Cargill. We are concerned about the same access point. Obviously, we need to discuss who owns what. When we purchased that from Tyson's back in 2000, we haven't changed anything, not that it couldn't have been messed up beforehand. But we have the same access or the same concerns using the driveway. If we do not own it, then it's a mute point. If we do own it, then we have 30 to 40 semis coming through there daily. We park on that driveway as they come in, so we would be blocking access. And then you've got the, obviously, you've got the liability. So our attorneys would like to discuss with the developers and work out a solution. But we have not been in touch, been in contact or been contacted by them about this. But that's the only concern that we have. The rest of the development, we don't have an issue with.
That second driveway that creates the issue.
Well, it sounds like we've got more than just a bigger problem of access. It's who owns what.
Table it, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mission?
Do you want us to continue, or do you want us to table it until these issues get addressed?
Sarah, I don't know that we can really hear, vote on this with this outstanding on here.
I mean, you can always have a condition on there. It just depends on what the commission is comfortable voting on and not voting on.
Okay.
I mean, I think, for me, unless I'm hearing differently from you guys, my preference would be just make these conditions to the approval, and that way I don't have to bring it back in front of this board and kind of just work it out with planning staff and Springdale Water and Cargill.
That always sounds real easy.
You feel like we should table this one?
I feel like we should table it. I mean, if there is an ownership issue, there's some... If there hasn't been any discussions between this developer and Cargill about the issue, I think we need to at least start there before we ask the Planning Commission to approve something with any kind of condition. So my recommendation would be that we table it until we get those issues taken care of.
That's acceptable. Okay. Thank you. Next section is rezoning, R-19-29 Ralph and Estella Rogers, Revocable Trust, Washington County Parcel, 815-291-06-110, from O1 to C4, presented by Harrison French.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Crayer with Harrison French &amp; Associates, representing the project. Heritage Funeral Home is hoping to relocate to the site, so we're asking for the planned commercial district for a funeral home. And the owners are here to answer any questions if anything comes up that I can't answer. So we'll be happy to do that.
Staff comments?
Okay. The C4 commercial district is not one we use very often, and it is designed for us to approve a zoning with a specific use and a plan that goes with it. Aaron, do you have the plan loaded of what they propose? Okay, this would be a funeral home only. The parking and all access would be off of 48th Street. There is an error in the staff report because it says the area to the East Contains Office and Institutional. The property across the street is where the office and the institutional area is here. They are developing the entire site under one unified plan, and as I said, it would be held to that one use only. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential uses. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. The C4 planned commercial district provides for well-designed neighborhood, community, and regional-scale shopping facilities in appropriate locations. Such developments are intended to serve the broad commercial needs of the community laid out and developed as a unit according to an approved plan. The funeral home proposed is situated in close proximity to residential development with access being on a major collector, 48th Street. Building setbacks and screening will be adhered to to achieve a compatible relationship between the commercial development and adjacent residential areas. The entire property is being developed under a unified site plan made a part of the zoning request and approved for approval. Recommended for approval, I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name's Carl Grimes, and my wife and I own the property at 2591 South 48th, adjacent to this piece of property. And before I get started, I want to say thank you to you folks for doing this kind of service. Years ago, I served on the city council and the school board. Thankless jobs, and thank y'all for doing it. I have some concerns and questions. Before I go into that, I want to make a disclosure that I did make an offer on this piece of property, which was rejected, just so you guys will know about that. I'm curious, is there a crematorium that will be associated with this? So no crematorium? Okay, that's good. I'm concerned about the parking situation. I know that in the past that this company, Moore's, I believe is the name of the funeral home, has acquired two other funeral homes locally, and so you're going to be hopefully getting the business from those funeral homes in addition to probably picking up some others. So I'm concerned about the volume of parking that would be available on this location. Number two, I know that the city of Springdale has had some issues in the past with large funerals and overflow parking to the point where the city of Springdale had to restrict parking around certain areas, so I'm concerned about that. And also, I hope these people are successful, not with my particular personal situation, but that they will have lots of funeral processions, and those don't seem to be real appropriate. I think if you can get two or three funerals a week, that's going to create quite a traffic flow there in addition to the parking. And it also seems to me that to sit this rezoning in the middle of this and say it's a single use is not really a good plan for that whole piece of 48th Street. We were glad to see some rezonings start taking place because we have some ideas for our property as well, but this doesn't seem to be, doing it piecemeal doesn't seem to be the real way that we think it should go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments in the audience? It's to the commission? Oh, I'm sorry. If you'll come up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Amber Carnes. My husband and I own the property that is right in back, 2504 Dovey Street. I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker.
It's quite all right.
I wrote a letter. I have some concerns, and some of them, the owners are our neighbors, and some of them have already been answered. And my concern was also about the crematory and people being buried there. And then my other concern was the traffic. And then the impact that it would have on the children. I don't know that it would have any impact on the children other than the constant grief. I'm not totally opposed to it. I just have a lot of concerns about it. And then the property value, how it would affect our property value. My husband and I did not actually, we weren't home when they tried to deliver this notice, and so we didn't actually get it till just yesterday. So I wasn't able to speak to a realtor about how it would affect the property value. That would just be my question, if it would cause our property value to go down because we just bought that house. So, but I do have a letter. I'm not totally opposed to it. I just, those are my concerns.
You want to make sure your comments, if you give me that letter, we'll make sure it gets...
Yeah. Thank you.
Some of them have already been answered, so some of it won't apply. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. Did you want to go ahead, ma'am, with your comments?
So I am... My husband is a third owner of the property in question where they're wanting to put the funeral home in.
Could you state your name, please, for the...
My name is Lisa Rogers. So my thing is, like, this gentleman talking about, he actually purchased his property from my deceased father-in-law. Okay? He did mention that he put an offer on it, which he did, and, you know, so I think there might be a little bit of... But anyways, nevertheless, there's... There could be a lot worse things, in my opinion, that go on that property. And mind you, I live right across the fence from it right now, so it backs up. So, I mean, I could think of a lot worse things that could be there, and I just ask that you guys approve it and just go on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Harris. I am the owner of the funeral home. My wife and I purchased Memorial Funeral Home in 2015, and we just recently acquired Heritage in May of this year. The current Heritage Funeral Home is approximately a half a mile to the north of this particular property. Due to the number of families that we're currently serving, the building has become not large enough for us to accommodate the families that we're currently serving. So in order to have continuity from where we currently are, we've found this location approximately a half a mile to the south so we could better serve our community. Springdale's growing. We know that it's growing. We're not adding another funeral home. We're just transitioning down, down the street. So at no time are we going to put in a crematory. That's not our intent. It's just to be able to offer a better facility to the fast-growing community of which we currently have. So that's the sole purpose. We don't believe that what we're going to build and what we're going to design will be anything that will be a detriment to the current existing property owners around us. We plan on putting up privacy fans, you know, screening so that it will be pleasing to the neighbors around us. So it is just our goal to better serve our families of Springdale and the community of which we're a part of. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, if you'll come back up to the mic, please.
Just a point of clarification. I didn't buy that from that lady's father-in-law. I bought it from RVS Bank, my wife and I did.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, if you can come to the mic, please.
My name's Grant Siemens. I'm with Heritage Funeral Home, and I appreciate the opportunity to maybe address a few of the concerns. And I always understand sometimes the things that we don't know are the things that scare us the most. But I just, I want to reiterate a little bit of what Mr. Harris said. Our intention in building this facility is to create an aesthetically appealing building, being very conscientious with landscaping, to better serve the client families that we've had the opportunity to serve over the last 13 years. There are times where we do encounter rather large gatherings, funerals of that nature. And of course, a family will always consider the facility of the funeral home as an option for a funeral, but then will oftentimes look at maybe a church facility that will accommodate a larger group than what the funeral home can accommodate. As far as parking and traffic, currently, the number of client families that we serve and as we travel from our location on South 48th Street, we're, right now, we're across from the Holiday Inn Northwest Arkansas Convention area. We feel like we're your neighbor already. We just are looking to move down the road and stay within that neighborhood. But as of now, the number of funeral processions that we do utilize traveling from our facility to area cemeteries, really, I would not be adding any additional traffic to South 48th Street. From our current location, oftentimes, we do travel south down 48th Street to the Don Tyson Corridor to either travel east across town, or whether we're going out towards the Friendship Cemetery, Bluff Cemetery, as well as traveling west towards Elm Springs. We just try to avoid the 412 Sunset area as much as possible because of the number of stoplights. And again, I, you know, if any of the concerns that have been voiced here tonight, you know, want to be addressed privately, I would be more than happy to sit and visit with any of the neighbors to also try to rest any concerns that you have. We want nothing more than to continue to provide the best quality of care that we can for the families that put their trust in us and have a facility that's well-adapted to meet the needs of our client families now as well as in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to you?
Go ahead.
Currently, sir? Currently at your location, since you're across from the Holiday Inn, are you containing all parking on your property, or are people encroaching on other places?
Well, and that was the one thing about our current location, is that piece of property oftentimes does not accommodate the number of visitors or guests that we might have attend an event. And so there have been times where we have had overflow parking over to the Holiday Inn, which some people think South 48th Street's a racetrack. And it's a... Anytime we have folks park across the street to come to our building, we try to be out there to help them cross the street because it is so, such a dangerous street to cross for pedestrians. Since the new hotel is open behind us, they have had times where they've had to use our parking, and we in turn have been able to use their parking for overflow. But right now, our current parking lot only accommodates about 40, can't remember if it's 42 or 44 vehicles. And that's another reason why we were looking at this other location, to be able to have almost twice the parking amount that we currently have, which accommodates, for the most part, any event that we might have, whether it's an evening gathering or a visitation, or whether it's a funeral or a memorial ceremony. And I will also say that not all, not all events that we have conclude with a large procession of cars leaving to travel to a cemetery. But, you know, right now, we oftentimes have the need for overflow parking, and that's one reason why this other property is one that we wanted to consider, is it would... it would accommodate the parking for the vast majority of events that we would be hosting.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask, and so, what will you do with the building that you're currently in?
The, the agreement on the current property is, is once we vacate that location, it will, it will not be used for any type of, of related industry. I, I will maintain ownership of that property, maybe find somebody that needs a little boutique shop, or I-
So, you'll maintain ownership?
We'll maintain ownership, but it will not continue on in its, in its current capacity. It won't have anything related to our profession.
And then, if, if, if you're unsuccessful in what you're asking for, what would you do? What would your next option be?
Well, we're, we're just perhaps maybe considering, and I don't, I don't want to speak for, for Mr. Harris and, and, and him, but we have looked at, you know, are there going to be other options out there for us within the, the vicinity? We really, I think sometimes to, to move a great distance away from your current location can sometimes be a detriment. We, we feel like we have a, a, you know, a friendly neighborhood around us. We feel like we're a good location now. We're just trying to improve on that. So, we really don't have a contingency plan.
What was in the building before y'all moved the funeral home?
I know when we initially moved here some years ago, it was, I believe, West Side Church of Christ. It had sold. We purchased the property from Tom Pennington. At that time, there had been, I think they had an antique store once upon a time, and then a, like, a, a gallery exhibit center-
I think originally it was a church. The church moved-
But originally, it was a church, yes.
Forty-nine, too.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Sir?
I'm John Hobert. I'm the tenant in twenty-five ninety-one. And I, I'm just ignorant of the process. I'd like to understand better what happens next. If, you know, how does this work? Do we get to see plans beforehand, and do we have any input in that?
If the, if the zoning is approved by this commission, it goes to city council. They approve the zoning. They will have to come back and submit a large-scale development plan that actually shows the details. I mean, we have a layout. We know what it's going to be, but to address the screening issues and the, the landscaping and all that kind of, what the building itself looks like. They'll have to come back. All the adjacent property owners are notified again when the large-scale development plan is submitted.
Okay, so we would, we would at least have some input on that. Okay, all right. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. What's the use unit for this?
Well, it'll be a use unit, I think, but it will be just a funeral home. It's nothing else but that use.
So, that's, that is one of my questions, right? And it brought it up because he asked about the, the use, right? So, they're vacating the current-
We're not rezoning this for a use unit. We're rezoning it for a funeral home at this location.
So, my question is, why, why are we doing that instead of the, you know?
If we rezoned it to a C2, that would allow it to go in. Anything that's allowed in a C2 could go in there. This would give you the, the planned development of being a funeral home at this location only. If they want to do something other than a funeral home, they'll have to come back and change it, either to a new zoning classification, or to amend that C4 to add a different use.
Is there any, by, is there anything that by going the route of the C4 that we're bypassing that would be in place for the C2? Because, and, you know, they're able to rent out their former building now, you know, to, to another group, or whatever. So, my question is, if they, if they, again, grow and move from this location-
And this is a planned commercial zone that is zoned with this layout for a funeral home only. That's the only uses allowed. The only, the, we've only got a couple of other places that we have a C4, and if they want to change the use, they have to come back and change it. You guys have to agree to a different use. So, they couldn't rent it out to someone else as a, anything other than a funeral home.
Yes. So, my question is, though, why, but why, why are we taking that approach with this particular property, as opposed to just rezoning it to a C2, and it being open to other commercial businesses?
It, it was to address the concerns of the adjacent property owners of something else going in there that is allowed in a C2 zone, because it backs up directly to the residents. And I'll tell you, my recommendation to them was to come back with a C4, specifically that if you're going from an O1 to something more intense, because it backs up to that, to that neighborhood directly.
I did want to just make a couple of comments. Somebody else asked about, you know, we had asked about the effect on the value of the property. And I think it, we're all on the same page with that, that strip of South Forty-Eight right there will be commercial use, right? And so, we have design standards in place that will make sure that, you know, it has to look like, you know, like every other building that, that we have the base requirements for. So, I don't think that there's, I don't think that there's an issue with a, with a business, with a, a commercial building and a commercial zoning, even though it's adjacent to a neighborhood affecting residential home values.
It's going from an O1?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, which was restricted to offices, nothing larger than five thousand square feet, office use only. And this is a little bit more of an intense because of the, the traffic situation, the number of vehicles, that kind of stuff.
But what is the, what is the, what is our land use for that? Is that, are we, is it typically O1 on this stretch, or is it just commercial, general commercial?
I don't think it's even general commercial. I think it's residential. I have to look. Hold, give me a minute. See how good I am at doing this on here.
I did, I did take, one thing that stuck in my mind was the point that they made about the, the size of the facility will, will, the family will consider that as part of the decision on where to hold the service, right? So, I don't, I don't, me personally, I don't feel like there's a huge concern about somebody picking to have a service at a facility that's not near big enough to accommodate everybody, right?
South Forty-Eighth Street between Levine and Watkins is all shown to be low, low-density or medium-density residential. There's no commercial shown on that side at all. All the commercial is on Forty-Eighth Street to Forty-Nine.
Then I would say, then that's a, that's, that's probably an error in the, in the, in our, in our land use, because that's not the way that that's seeming to go right down the street.
This is a pretty specific area of focus, that when we've looked at master land use plan, I don't know that we've looked, to your point, I don't know.
I just, yeah, I just want to get it in the record, if we're not going with the land use plan, that there's a-
It was already O1, right.
You said that that strip is mostly, so on that side of Forty-Eighth is mostly residential?
But this had already been rezoned to O1, and so it's the property next to it already zoned O1.
All, all the way up even to where we, because there's more businesses up-
Well-
As you go north, right?
The area from here north, this property up to the top of that map is all zoned A1. It hasn't been rezoned to anything. It's got single-family houses on larger tracts. These are, this is one vacant piece of property that's been in there a long time, so. And it was my recommendation to come in with C4. If it was something going to be more intense than an office zone, so that we knew exactly what it was going to be.
I mean, I, I think that's-
I did have a question on the, there was two questions asked about the crematory. If it changed owners again, and a new owner wanted to put one there, could that happen?
I think where, there are other restrictions of where crematories can go anyway.
Okay. Just want to make sure that was addressed.
And you can't, they can't use it for a cemetery. There's, that's not allowed there either, so.
So, that's clearly defined as far as this C4 component. Okay. And then, as far as the, when we get to the large scale, the parking will definitely be defined based off of the occupancy of the building and the use for it. That will restrict as far as the maximum capacity as far as the parking. So, that's well within the control of, of those in there.
Their, their layout shows seventy-five spaces. I don't know, how big of a building does that base on? I don't know.
We haven't determined the occupancy load of the building yet. It's just too early. I think code says one parking space per four occupants. So, when we get further down the line in design, we'll make sure that those calculations match up. But for the purpose of this concept plan, we just didn't have that information from the architect yet.
Okay.
You're going from roughly forty-something to seventy-something parking spaces right now, and then how much square foot is changed?
It's, it's an estimate right now.
Yeah, I know. I'm just curious.
How big is the existing building y'all have?
I would say it's around twenty-eight hundred square.
Oh, wow.
The occupancy is based upon your corridor or your chapel size, what you seek through there. Home square footage is-
Right.
Doesn't really compute to what your chapel space is.
Have bathrooms and stuff like that. Right.
There'll be offices and that sort of thing in the building as well, once we have the architectural layout.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the, the commission?
I, I just have one more comment. I, you know, I think with the opportunity to look at this again, as it, as we board, and then with just driving Forty-Eighth Street, you know, day in and day out, and how much traffic moves through there, and what other uses we can have for this property as a city, you know, I, I think that looking at it the way we are is an appropriate way. I'd, I'd hate to put any type of dense residential there with the way that traffic moves without something. I think that'd be more difficult to plan.
Okay. Does be a call for the vote? I think you have. I'm sorry, I got, yeah, if you'll come up to the mic.
While I appreciate the fact that you try to choose your facility to suit the number of people that would be there, the problems you've had in the past with parking at funeral homes was that very issue. The family chose a funeral home, and there were more people there, and you had to get into the parking issues. So, I appreciate what they're saying, but that can happen. So, be aware of that. Number two, and to address the, this gentleman's comment about, yes, it'll probably be a very nice building, but it's a funeral home. And I'm not sure that that's going to enhance the property values, even though it will be a nice building. I'm sure these folks will put up a good building. I know that from our perspective, having a funeral home next door to an office is not exactly what you're looking for. And particularly, since we're planning on expanding our property and adding additional office space there, we'll be back to visit with you guys sometime in the future. So, I just want to express my concerns about those two things. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, directly across the street, is property available? And I believe that it's already C2 zoned. Is that correct, across the street?
I don't think so. I think it's all-
Because I-
Yeah, yeah. Waco, C2, and-
Yeah, to the south of it, where those new offices. The rest of it is, is Artic Guidance Center, and that's all P1.
Yeah, it's P1.
So, if we were to acquire the property in one direction or the other, it's not going to impede, or detract, or deter traffic if we, if we built a funeral home in a C2 across the street? Part of the reason why we chose C4 over C2 was because of her recommendation, but also just to let the, the citizens and the neighbors know what the intent was. Because when you go C2, obviously, I think it's, it's a very broad-brush thing, and we want everybody to be real specific of what, of what we're trying to do. But we could put a funeral home across the street, and I think it's, I don't know if it would help or hurt, or impact the property values, because it's across the street. I, I don't, I don't think it would, would matter. But anyway, I just wanted to comment that I don't think traffic's going to change if we were to acquire a place across the street. There is a need for us to move to a larger facility, just because of the number of families that we're serving, and, and we want to better serve our, our clientele and, and the community. And so, that's the real reason for, for, for the move. But I just wanted to comment about, about whatever the zoning is, is across the street is, makes it available to be a funeral home. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thank you. And y'all are more than welcome to stay, but if you need to leave. Because it gets more exciting as we go along, so.
Hope it doesn't get more exciting.
Yeah. Actually, sometimes we don't really want a lot of excitement on some of these on here, so. Next item, R nineteen dash thirty, Cornerstone Propane, thirty-one fifty-one East Robinson Avenue, from A1 to C5, presented by Ricky Hill.
Well, we don't want more exciting, but Ricky Hill, I'm here to represent it for them. They had an unfortunate illness, and so the lady that was going to be here couldn't make it, so I'll try to answer your questions.
Okay, staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial and reasonable commercial use for this area. The zoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structures through promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations, promote the viability of older commercial properties, as well as new commercial developments.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
What, what, what prompted this? Is there an expansion planned, or what, I mean, it's, you've been a propane company forever out there.
It's, it's, as far as I know, it's going to remain propane company, but they may have plans to expand, and they're going to have to expand based on the new zoning. Instead of, I, I understand it's probably an inappropriate zoning currently.
It got annexed into the city as A1.
It's A1 and never changed?
Never changed.
Right. And they're, they're trying to accommodate that zoning to represent the property as it is now, and then probably expand at some later date.
I think I've got a concern with C5 being adjacent to residences. I guess if, if I were to go back in time, maybe low-die terrace wouldn't exist there, but it does. So, I think that die's been cast. From there north, I don't have any issue. But up against those residences, a C5 is our most intense commercial. Is that right? So, I don't normally recommend or even talk about split zoning, but I think this is a property that might be ready for it.
The only concern I had, it has been used, the entire piece of property's been used for storage for many years. They were there before the residential was developed. It just wasn't presented to.
Yep, they, and if they never did anything else with it, but what they do today, I don't think that's an issue, because they moved there with that in line. But once it goes C5, that could be a totally different atmosphere right outside their back fence. So, I just think there needs to be a buffer between a C5 and a residential.
What would you suggest the buffer be?
Well, I think the back part of that property should probably be something less, what that would be, C2, or even an O something, so that it's transitioned between, it could be the offices for the propane business out front, just not loading docks and trucks with backup alarms in the middle of the night kind of thing outside your back door. I may be alone, so that's just my opinion.
Can you tell us what, what's allowed in a C5?
What's allowed in a C5?
I might, I might have it up if it's quicker.
Five allows for C-wide public uses by right, cultural, recreational, health facility, institution facilities, offices, studios, and related services. Using it seventeen A and seventeen B, which are eating places, hotel, motel, and entertainment facilities, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, parking lot, auction houses, open display, retail sales, church or synagogue, healthcare clinic, flea market, indoor and commercial assembly.
And what is, do you know what the current, what our current use unit is for this?
Kind of, I think we put it in a use unit.
I was, I was expecting you to come up.
Can't be twenty-six, right?
Twenty-three, commercial large signs. Or a-
Twenty-three's not C5.
Trades and services.
It has a specific designation as a gas bottle distributor, which is, I mean, what he is, so.
Which one is it?
Oh.
Yeah. It, it fell, it's under the, it's in a C5, but allowed as a conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to come back and get a conditional use. That's right. I forgot. You're right.
Subdivision to the west, SF two.
Is it SF two? Erin, do you know what the subdivision to the west is?
Yeah, while he's looking that up, go ahead.
Danny Wright, Springdale Police. The use unit eighteen, she mentioned entertainment facility. That would also include nightclubs and bars.
So, there's no restriction of hours on, of operation on this? That could be put into the conditional use?
Could be put into the conditional use, yes. Screening requirements and those kinds of- of things.
But if it changed to a bar, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a conditional use and there would be no restrictions. I'm sympathetic for what it is. I'm just afraid of what it could be.
Well, that's what we have challenges with as far as...
Can they rezone just the front half and leave the other and still fall under grandfathered in for storing what they've got there? The, uh, one thing is that the property to the, the residential to the west is SF3. There is a C2 zone just to the west of this, and it's C2 on the corner where the bank is, across Butterfield Coach where the other stuff is, is C5. Uh, there are other C5 locations that back up to that subdivision along... Are you trying to get to, to the zoning map?
It's the four, it's the section four.
So, in the C5, um, what's the paving requirement?
Anyplace they store equipment or vehicles or anything like that has to be paved.
So, right now, if we, if it's, they're a conditional use in a C5 right now, that's what...
It would have to be a conditional use in a C5. They'll have to come back and apply for a conditional use for it.
Okay, because all...
If it gets rezoned to C5.
Because all the stuff that's regularly allowed in C5, I don't, I don't see anything in there that jumps out at me as super incompatible. It is the, it is more the stuff that's the conditional use in the C5, like recycling collection facility, that kind of stuff. But like, just what's strictly allowed in C5, to me, there's not anything that's highly incompatible being next, given what else is on that stretch of 412 right there, personally.
I mean, I'm thinking ahead as far as if we did rezone this to C5 and there's expansion that's done, you're going to have a certain percentage as far as paving requirements and a lot of upgrades that are going to come associated with that as well.
Well, I can't honestly sit here and express to you truthfully that they're actually going to expand.
I understand.
I just know that they're trying to clean this up.
Sure.
You know, so, uh, down the road, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to guess as to their intentions.
Can you not get the colors to come on?
Little red's on.
I mean, your recommendation that you had as far as a split zone on it and doing O1, say on the back of it, would require as far as a, I mean, I don't, I don't know that you're in a position to make those decisions on there.
I wouldn't be.
There just seems to be a lot of unknowns on this. I don't know that we're in a position to be able to, to vote on this tonight effectively.
It can be tabled and let us discuss options of, of different zoning that doesn't go quite that deep. Uh, I think to get to their building that's existing, what, do you know what's in that?
What's, what is the zoning of those other properties around them? Is it all A1 stuff?
Why don't we do the work to really understand the zoning around each of these?
Well, but why do we...
C2.
Hang on.
That's C2 though.
One conversation on, on this. Um, we're asking a ton of questions we don't have answers to on, on this.
What is the question you're asking?
Well, they're asking a lot of questions around what's the zoning around each of these properties. You're not able to pull that up.
It's C2 to the northeast, it's SF3 to the west, and to the south is a part of them, which is like A1. The land use midways through the property is regional commercial, uh, which is, would be in agreement with C5, and then it transitions to C2. So.
I mean, we could do a C2 in the back.
Yeah, it's all right. I did, we just don't use this platform. We have a different one, so it's just like a little cumbersome.
I agree, but that's not his request.
True.
Unless he modifies his request, it's C5, yes or no.
Yeah. Do you want to table this and go back and let us sit down and talk with the applicant about revising it and doing part of it as C5 and part of it as C2, or do you want to go ahead and vote on it tonight?
Well, it's, that wouldn't be my call. If you choose to table it, that would be your choice. I'm not going to make a call for them as far as splits on it.
Okay. You can ask for the, the whole, the entire request as written to be voted on tonight. If it is denied, you have a right to appeal that to city council. City council does, does their portion of it. If you, if you want to table it, because you're not in a position to address any modification to that, we can do that too.
And it'd have to come back next month.
Right, have to come back next month, right.
Yeah, that, that line for C5 is like right in here, like right transition. I go C2 below it, right here.
And so, I, that's SF?
This right here is SF3. This whole subdivision.
Uh-huh.
See where Austin's clicking on the other one?
Yeah.
Across that C2 all the quarter, that's like the northwest corner, kind of bank.
Okay.
And where this parcel is, right through the middle of it, kind of where that road would come right through, and it's, it transitions from the land use plan to C5.
And all that south of it is still A1. It hasn't been rezoned. Do you give down to the school?
Yeah, let's go ahead and table this on here because, um, I mean, this is an, this is an area of the city that, I mean, we have before us tonight quite a few developments around, in close proximity of this. Um, I mean, I appreciate as far as getting it to the, the proper zoning, but that, that indicates to me that there is intent as far as doing something with...
Well, with all due respect though, if they choose to drop the zoning request to have it rezoned, they continue to operate like they are. They just can't upgrade it or can't remount.
They can't expand it because it's a non-conforming use more than 30%.
Okay.
If they intend, if they decide, if they want to withdraw it in the next month.
Now, are you going to, are you going to contact them to...
But if he's asked to hear it that way?
We'll contact them tomorrow and explain to them that it's been tabled and they need to come visit with us.
To choose to do the C5 and the C2?
Okay.
We'll do that. Will you make a note to contact them tomorrow, please?
I'd prefer to table it because there's not enough here and not the appropriate decisions to be made as far as the mandate, how we can move forward with it.
Evan, what, what else, what, what do we not have though that we need to have?
Well, if they want to split it and rezone it into...
But that, but they don't, right? So, their request is C5.
Well, I don't know that...
That's their request.
He's saying he's not in a position to even discuss whether it could be split or not.
I know. I just don't want, I just feel like it's a little bit slippery if we get into, you know, tabling or trying to, the request that's before us was a C5. So, I just don't, I just don't know why we can't just vote on the C5 and, you know.
For us to vote or not?
Yeah, I, that's why I asked. Do you want it voted on as a C5 or do you want to ask for it to be tabled?
Well, that's what I said though, that I'm not in a position to make the call for them to have a split zone. You know, I mean, you know, off the record, I would ask you, you know, uh, how do you feel about it? If you're, if you're going to deny the C5, there's no sense in voting on it.
Well, you don't, you don't get to go that route.
I, I, I get, I get that, but I'm just saying, you know, I'm...
Can you tell him, can you tell him his options if it's voted yes or if it's voted?
Well, I have the right to appeal it. We understand. I, I know that.
You have the right to...
Why don't we just table it? We'll contact them.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll choose to do it that route.
Okay. And it's at the applicant's request.
Yes, that, that was my whole point. If he wants to table it, I...
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the only other comment that I'd make associated with this, I mean, normally, as far as these C5, C5 areas, it's pretty cut and dry. But, I mean, the years that I've been serving on the planning commission, these are the things that we've been left to clean up, quite honestly, as far as how some of this zoning has taken place in here. So, this one is a bit tricky as far as how it is laid out. Um, because that's why I was also letting you know that I'm good with a lot of this being C5, um, but I also agree with, uh, Mr. Peters as far as the, the concern as far as the residential. But we also do want the property owner to know that when you do zone to a C5, you have responsibility as far as compliance to a C5 based off of the business that's being ran in that location.
I'm sure they were aware of that.
Current use and any future development that they do on that. So, if they, if they do have intentions to expand that business there, they will have to comply as far as paving requirements and things like that. So, I'm just making sure that people are educated as far as what they're getting into as far as a tremendous expense associated with that. I do applaud as far as trying to get this in compliance to the rest of the city. But there are some, some things to think through and I'd prefer more of a conversation versus not having everything in front of them to clearly make the appropriate decisions. I don't know what all's been discussed as far as with the planning department associated with this property.
There's been very little discussion about it.
Well, and, and that's my concern. And that, and that's, that's no, it's not against the planning department because you guys get served up with a lot of things, but part of our responsibility here is to do some education as well and not just be a, a body that just approves things or denies things or whatever and that whole piece, so.
Oh, I'm well aware of that.
That's kind of where I was, Peyton, as far as, you know, by all means, they have the rights as far as to have things voted on, but I think there is, uh, some ambiguity in this one. Okay?
No problem.
All right. Next item, R19-31 AAH, revocable trusts, approximately 14 acres at the intersection of Highway 112 and Harbor Avenue from A1 to RE, presented by Jacob Takeersley.
Hello.
Any comments that you have on this or...
So, uh, I have this property under contract just there, um, on the south side of Harbor. Um, this was actually just recently, there was, they put it through a lot split. The owners are keeping the top half, um, north of Harbor. And, uh, so I've got the approximately 15 acres under contract on the south side, and that's what I'm asking to get rezoned from agriculture. Um, I'm looking at doing some single-family homes and looking at doing one-acre lots.
Okay, so you're not asking to, to rezone the property on the north side as well?
No, ma'am.
Okay, the legal description that was submitted, was it for only that portion that's on the south side?
The lot split was not complete at the time I submitted the rezone app. It has been completed now.
Have you seen, Erin, have you signed off on the lot split? I didn't think we'd seen a lot split. But it, has it been just submitted to our office to have it approved?
Yeah, if y'all come up to the mic, please.
We still show this to V1 track with an easement across, with a road right away through it.
Oh, yeah, it hasn't been signed yet, so.
But it, this is the split right here.
Yeah.
The attorney has it. What he's done with it is...
Okay, so they haven't submitted it to us. They have a legal description for the bottom track, but no, we haven't seen it yet.
I didn't think we'd seen one because I went back and looked through things to find it. So, okay, so you want to amend your request to only rezone the portion south of Harbor Avenue once we adopt this? And how much is left on the north side?
It's 7.88 acres. You mind if I pass this around to them?
No.
Okay, so there's, it's got 200-foot frontage. You can stay A1 if it want, if it needs to.
That's what we would prefer, is it to stay A1.
Okay, but when the, the resounding request didn't have the legal description for just that portion in it yet?
I'm the owner. I'm Anna Hollingsworth.
My name is Whitney Riley. I'm her daughter.
And so, the dividing line would be Harbor Avenue?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Any additional staff comments?
The resounding is not an issue. We'll just have to get a correct legal description if we're only rezoning the bottom portion. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, stabilized property values and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
And so, we're revising this to just amend to just be the north portion of the property with Harbor Avenue being the dividing line?
The south portion.
South part.
The south portion. And you said it's how many acres on that?
15, just over 15.
15.30.
15.30.
Okay.
All right, any questions or comments from the audience?
I had one comment.
Yes.
The property on the south is adjacent to the floodplain zone A, which means that it is likely to flood in a 100-year flood event, but there are no elevation studies to determine base flood elevations. Um, so if this is going to be rezoned for single-family homes, I think it would be important to note that and that an elevation study take place to know the likelihood of the homes flooding.
As a rezoning issue, all we're determining is the highest and best use of the property. When they come back with a subdivision plat, they will have to address all those issues with preliminary plat. That's not usually something we address with a, with a rezoning request.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Pass this eight zero.
Steph will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd, and we will need to make sure we get that revised legal description in so we can get it.
All right. Thank you all. Next item, R19, and, and by the way, on that one property there, um, sorry, um, it was labeled wrong as far as file number R19-32, and it should have been 31.
Oh, yeah, the map needs to be changed to say 31.
Uh, next item, R19-32, John and Pamela Gay Family Trust, south of Julio West of Butterfield Coach, north of Tyson Heights, southwest Sonoma, southwest of Sonoma subdivision from SF2 to SF3, presented by Bates and Associates.
Jeff Bates with Bates and Associates?
It's the wrong map.
Yep, that's not it. There it is. That looks more better.
Okay. We're... Comments?
You have something you want to say?
Oh, I was just going to say that we're just wanting to rezone it to do some more single-family homes similar to the adjacent subdivisions.
Adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use. The existing zoning, which is SF2, allows for four units per acre, which is in keeping with the adopted plan. The rezoning request is not in keeping with that comprehensive land use plan is not recommended for approval. Why do you go to SF3?
We need 65-foot lots. There's a huge demand for the 65-foot lots. Um, we're only doing 3.6 units per acre, and our lots meet the square footage for SF2, but not the width because you have to be 70-foot for SF2, and all of our lots on the plat that's up next is, shows 65 by 130 or 65 by 140. They're all bigger lots. They, there's just a demand right now for the narrower lots.
Five homes per acre?
3.6.
Lot is two tenths of an acre?
Uh, 65 by 132, whatever that comes out to be. It's a little bit bigger than the ones below it and to the ones to the east of it.
Any additional comments? Any questions or comments from the audience?
If I may, I'd just like to address, I'm Mike Dennyton. I'm the gentleman that's made an offer on the property to develop it. I'm also the developer to the, to the east of this property, uh, which is Summer View, which was, uh, approved as a PUD. Those lots are 60-foot wide. Uh, I think they're 120 feet deep. These lots are bigger. Uh, the main reason to reduce the size of the, the frontage is cost. The builders and the developers are having a hard time providing, uh, homes in this area for working people to be able to afford it. The, the development costs have just went up astronomical. So, we're trying to find a happy medium to provide housing, uh, for residents that are moving in and provide a good quality product. So, this... So this is actually bigger than, than Summer View, a little smaller than what's to the, the south there. But again, there's just a huge need to provide housing and, and there is a lot shortage at this time in Springdale. So just wanted to mention that.
But going for an SF three, if it's rezoned to SF three, you can get a sixty-foot lot at seven thousand square foot. Okay, that's what the zoning allows.
And we're asking for sixty-five feet, basically, sixty-four, sixty-five.
We have a preliminary plat a few items down. It shows they're all sixty-five by a hundred and thirty. We're asking for approval tonight, so.
Zoning, once the zoning is done, you could put half again as many houses on there.
I'm sorry.
We're rezoning the piece of property, so it really doesn't matter what you say you're going to put on there. Once it's rezoned, you could put instead of forty homes, eighty homes.
It's platted for seventy-two homes.
He wouldn't have spent all the money.
And I don't pay an engineer to do that.
I understand that, but.
So we're definitely not going to go, you know, further because it wouldn't allow.
If that's the case, why didn't you submit a PUD so we would know we were getting sixty-foot lots, sixty-five-foot lots, instead of coming in and asking for an SF three? If you've already done all the engineering and you had a preliminary plat approved, why did you not come ask for a PUD then we knew we were getting sixty-five-foot lots? Instead of, well, the zoning allows for.
It matches everything right next to it. I mean, it's not really any different than.
Well, the lots next door are seventy-foot lots, except for a few of them. They got some variances for some of those lots to be sixty-five.
And all of those to the east are sixty-foot? So this is kind of, it almost.
Those two, which ones to the east?
The PUD.
The PUD.
But it's a PUD.
Okay, but it's a PUD. We knew what they were going to look like. We knew how they were going to be laid out. We knew what the, the, the whole rest of it was going to look at. When you ask us to rezonate, as Vivi just said, just to SF three, it opens it up to sixty-foot lots and a higher density. I, I'm surprised if you spent all the money to have the preliminary plat that you didn't come in and ask for that to be a PUD. Is there a reason why, oh, the percentage of open space is higher when you go with a PUD?
What do you mean by that?
Well, if you go for a PUD, you've got to have more green space. Is that part of the problem for not going to a PUD?
No, we just turned it all in at the same time and nobody, I mean, we visited the city before and nobody recommended doing a PUD. We didn't think the, our, our, the SF three would be an issue. I mean, nobody, and we've already gone through tech review. We had all of our, nobody mentioned it then while we were going through the whole subdivision process over the last month.
If you can get the.
We just assumed that it was a good, I mean, we were good to go.
We just thought it was a good fit and there was no.
So the decision to go with higher, with a higher volume of density homes is strictly driven based off the economic conditions as far as the cost of building in that whole piece?
The more frontage you have, the more cost to that lot. And it's just a very tough situation, both for the developer and the builders, to provide homes, especially in East Springdale, because the price per square foot does not demand as much as it does in the west side.
One of the other reasons is on the west side is a huge trunk line feeding the Fayetteville's water. There's a thirty-six-inch line, a twenty-four-inch line. So those lots on the west side are like a hundred and seventy feet deep because there's a fifty or, I think it's at least fifty-foot easement all the way up the property before the lot can even start.
That's the same thing on the.
Green strip through there.
It's the same thing on the subdivision to the.
To the south.
South of it, they had that same issue to deal with.
But no, the intention was, we just thought because of, of the sixty-foot that way, that this was kind of a happy medium. They, you know, we're just, we're just trying to meet a need. So that was the only.
Well, let me ask a question as far as, I mean, given that he has a preliminary plat, could it be changed to recommendation as far as a PUD? And what difference would that make to the preliminary plat that's been introduced?
Well, we didn't review it, whether it meets the PUD standards or not. Does it have the fifteen percent of, of open space? Is it designed to meet the standards of the PUD? We don't have what the houses are going to look like. We don't have any of that kind of information if it was coming in as a PUD because it has to have a development plan that goes with it. That's, the one next door has all that stuff working for it.
I think when the, I mean, I, I, when you bring that to the city, they put in their comments that it's not zoned correctly. And if you want it zoned correctly.
It was never brought up. There was no negative comments concerning the zoning.
Well, they, the comments said it had to be rezoned.
For an SF three's zone, you're building for SF three and the property you own is not SF three.
Very first comment was the property is currently zoned S F T two and must be rezoned to show the SF three to accommodate for proposed lot configuration. That's the very first comment you got.
They cannot promise you a, a zoning. That's not their decision to make. That's your job to decide whether you want to continue with your engineering regardless of not being zoned for what you're engineering to.
Well, the density that we're doing is less than SF two. It's only three point six lots per acre.
Correct, but you're asking us to change the zone. And once it's changed, if something happened to you tomorrow and you decided you won the lottery and you're going to retire, we're left with SF three and someone can come in and put.
And so, and forgive me for not knowing, so with an SF three, Patsy, is that sixty-foot is what it allows? So.
Six units per acre, minimum lot size of sixty-foot frontage, seven thousand square feet. That's what an SF three allows you to do once it's rezoned to that.
Well, and then like I said, we could make this zoning do it with the contingency that we must maintain what's on this plat.
We can't zone as, as, an SF three with that contingency. Sarah, am I correct?
Yeah, you're correct.
You can only do that is if it comes in as a PUD. These are the requirements. This is what it's going to be. That's that contract between the city and the developer. Once we rezonate to SF three, it's the minimum lot size of this now. You can get a preliminary plat approved tonight. And we've got preliminary plats that's set two years and still haven't gone, gone to construction. So that's the only reason I bring this up because there is no guarantee we're going to get sixty-five-foot lots once we rezonate to an SF three.
So we got to table the rezoning and come back with a PUD? If they want to do sixty-five-foot lots?
Can, can I ask what, and again, this is just me asking, what is the fear of a sixty-foot wide lot regardless? What, what is the issue of that feeling? Is that, is that, why is that a problem?
I don't think when there's a fear of a sixty-five-foot lot.
Even a sixty-foot is what I'm asking.
Well.
What is that fear? What is that anxiety because of a sixty-foot wide lot?
For me, it's the density of six per acre where you're now.
There's not six per acre.
With the easements and stuff, you couldn't fit.
But if we, if we rezone it, if we vote to rezone, it, that will allow you six per acre.
We can only, our scope of what we look at is how many.
I didn't know it was six per acre, but.
It wouldn't physically work at six per acre is what I'm trying to say. Even if you rezonate, you couldn't get six lots per acre on that if you wanted to.
So I have a question. We have, this is zoned SF two currently.
Your request is to rezone it to SF three?
Yes, we consider SF two low-density?
Anything that's four units or less is considered to be low.
Low-density. SF three, we consider medium-density. Okay, the only.
Has to be made whether this is an appropriate location for medium-density.
So this is where, this is the point, the only point I'll make, I'll be quick. But if you look at the land use plan directly across, I think that's called Pino, that street right there. So if I'm looking at the land use plan, if that were to continue to the west, directly north of this property, we have zone, we have laid out as okay for medium-density residential. So for me, it's not a huge stretch to call this property to allow a medium-density residential here. Forget every, forget everything about lot size, green space, PUD, all that kind of stuff. I do think you know because you came in and talked to us about the PUD when we went down to the sixty-foot lots, right? Mike, didn't you come in and?
The first of them.
The first, so.
Not, not this.
Right, right, right. But you did that because you, you knew that to get, you were giving us some things to get the sixty-foot lot. But all that's, all that aside.
That never crossed my mind on this one because I thought with the sixty-five-foot lots.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. But I, I'm just trying to give both sides here.
And again, the builders are having more of a difficult time getting house plans to fit on the sixty and that's why we're trying to accommodate them as well.
I understand the economics. I'm just trying, I'm trying to make a case for you.
Yes, sir, I agree.
But the lots, you're talking.
Right across, right north of this, we would call this medium, medium-density. I personally think that medium-density would be, I don't, would be okay, especially given that they've gone through all the engineering costs to put this in. I, I do hear you that there is the possibility that he gets hit tomorrow and we have an SF three. I'm just saying I will take that risk given that I, I don't think, it's not like we're talking C five or, you know, SF two. We're talking SF two or SF three. And that's my, that's my.
Miss Gray, increase to six.
Yes.
So what we're going, any other questions or comments that anyone has in the audience on this? It's to the commission.
Well, I have a quick question. What about the road? That's Julio Road, right?
Yeah.
Pretty narrow road.
Our plan showed increasing it, widening on our half of the road to city standards with curb and gutter and sidewalk.
But only to the, to the eastern edge of the property? Nothing from there on out to, to Butterfield Coach, right?
No, because the other subdivision widened it from there on almost to Butterfield Coach.
Except for those few lots and, yeah.
And then it also connects to the south to the existing subdivision that goes out to Don Tyson Parkway.
It has three accesses. That Julio to the north, you've got the two accesses off Don Tyson.
Yeah, but you have to come through the subdivision to get to the second access because you're not putting an access on the east side, I mean, on the west side where the waterline and stuff is. There will be no road access on that side. There'll only be the one on the.
So there's only two accesses?
Right.
Julio Road and, and the eastern road in the subdivision.
Easement.
Only two there.
Transmission line.
That's why there's not one on that side.
Connection through Tyson Heights? Is that what, okay. Vivi, did you have a question?
Well, I mean, I think when, when you're saying that the medium-density on our, is directly to the north or is it the subdivision that goes on the west?
It's, it looks like it's north of, north of Julio.
Right here.
The, the line is right at, right at Julio.
Julio is the dividing line on the land use plan between medium to the north and low-density to the south. That's the dividing line.
Okay. Anything else?
Being new to the commission, do we have SF three subdivisions that are problematic? Without naming names, is this, is this, is this zoning not an appropriate zoning?
The one that we just talked about adjacent to the property was C five was an SF three. That one I know, I don't know of any problems with it. It's just a higher density.
Right.
Yeah.
But it, it functions. We haven't found that that just puts too many cars in one spot or two.
And it only has one access point because it was done before we had all that.
I just wondered if there was something faulty in the zoning period.
No, I don't, I don't know of any other, off the top of my head, I don't know of any. I didn't look at that either, too.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
No.
Haney?
No.
It's passed as five-three.
Thank you.
Steph will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you. Um, do we? Oh, I'll, I'll come back to it. Uh, R nineteen dash thirty-three, Butterfield Coach Group LLC, out parcel number five and six due east of Walmart Neighborhood Market on Butterfield Coach Road from C five to MF twenty-four, presented by Balloon Associates.
George came with Balloon Associates. We're looking at actually taking this property and doing some multifamily with it. Like to do some kind of townhouses and stuff, even though I know that's not what you guys should be able to consider. But wanted to, RMF twenty-four, the, the developer is here. So he'd actually like to say a few words, maybe, you know, just to kind of give you guys more of an idea as to why they're asking for it.
Go ahead.
Yes, uh.
If you can state your name for the record, please.
Uh, John Bracy with Palmer Properties. This is, this project's similar to some other projects we've, we did with the neighborhood grocery and then having some retail around it. And have, you know, after most of these properties were purchased prior two thousand eight, so kind of came online right after two thousand eight or two thousand nine. And, you know, we've found that particularly on this property that we've, we've struggled getting retail to come to this location, even though we have the neighborhood market, which is normally a draw and would bring those there. We have another project like this where we had added the residential to the back. So with that, it was able to just kind of put people at a tipping point to bring that retail. Even though they draw from an area, you know, wider radius, it just helps having that, you know, in this case, eighty or, you know, in, in that case, a hundred and fifty, you know, doors to, that are in a walking distance and, and can, can use the, the retail and the grocery. And, and also it just, you know, it helps, you know, national tenants and then other tenants to infill that, you know, just can't quite get there, haven't been able to, to this point. And it's certainly been, you know, marketed for several years. So we were thinking of coming in and putting some townhomes, which gives somebody, you know, a home. It's, it's not an apartment. It's more of a home. They do have a front yard. They do have access to a backyard. You know, we wanted to make that area very, you know, family-friendly, you know, have areas where they could grill out, that type of thing. We talked about having a, you know, a soccer area or a place where people could play ball, ball in between those areas where we have the lots up at the front closer to Butterfield Coach and then the property at the back. It's not something that we had planned in the beginning, but it's something that, you know, through, you know, the circumstances and time, we've seen that it, it's something that has helped other properties like this that have just not been able to get off the ground. And we don't see even on a, a timeframe of, without kind of interjecting some other use in with this to help the retail, seeing that retail come on for several years to the future. You know, it might be one or another here and there, but that's the way it's been for several years.
Thank you. Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Larger multifamily development should be located on sites with adequate space for off-street parking, accessory structures and recreational activity toward the edge of single-family residential areas where higher traffic generation and taller building heights can be better accommodated. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and encourages the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
All for the vote.
All for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight-zero.
Steph will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you. The next section is conditional use, C nineteen dash seventeen, Manuela Martinez, thirty-eighty-four Greenwich, Greenwich Street, use unit twenty-eight, home occupation and SF two, presented by Carolina Martinez.
My name is Carolina Martinez, translating for Manuela Martinez,
My name is Carolina Martinez, uh, translating for Manuela Martinez, who lives at 3084 Greenwich. Okay, este que vengo, a que me, a tratar de que me den una licencia para un small embroidery business in my home. Uh, she, again, she lives at 3084 Greenwich, and she has a small embroidery machine.
Can you pull that mic down a little bit? Thank you.
She lives at 38, 3084 Greenwich. Uh, she owns a small embroidery machine. Uh, she came here to the city to request a, uh, business license. She was told to come here. So, the machine is twice as big as a computer, uh, desktop. Um, it's only, it's only a one head, so it can only do one garment at a time, a shirt, a tee-shirt, or cap. She does her work at home and then delivers her finished goods to the people, so no traffic will be coming to the house or to the area. And the reason why she's getting the business license is because she can't, uh, purchase any goods from her vendors, um, supplies, and that's the reason why she's here requesting that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff comments?
Uh, the ingress and the egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking and loading areas is acceptable. Refugees and service areas are acceptable. Utilities are acceptable. Uh, there's no screening requirements. Uh, sign is not allowed. The yard requirements are acceptable. The size and shape of the size is acceptable. The landscaping, there's no landscaping requirements for that. The request is acceptable with the following conditions. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure or provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure. No outside storage of materials required for the operation of the business. Operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, concessionaires, or any other form of operator or helper, whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises. Requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential structure. Generates no traffic, parking, and sewage or water use in excess of what is normal in the residential neighborhood. Will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity. Will not involve accessory buildings, and stock and trade shall not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory use.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Conditional use passes 8-0.
Staff will prepare. The resolution goes to council on the 22nd.
And so it's recommended that you're there for the city council meeting on the 22nd. Okay? Thank you. Next item, C19-18, Joshua and Bobby Lawson, 3362 North 48th Street, tandem lot split, presented by Robert Crzan. Did I pronounce your last name?
Just Josh. My father-in-law is Robert Crzan. He couldn't make it.
Okay.
My name is Josh Lawson. I currently live at 3362 North 48th Street, and I'm here seeking, I don't know, a permission to build a shop down some land that I acquired.
Okay, you're originally, there was originally a conditional use for this piece of property for a tandem lot split. And basically, you're adding more area to that area than what was originally proposed?
That's correct.
Okay. Aaron, can you, as you can see, he's pointed out, it's a really small area that's being added to this conditional use. We don't have any other way to, uh, address this other than for him to come in and expand his conditional use to add that little piece to it.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Passes 8-0.
Uh, staff will prepare the resolution goes to council on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you so much.
I thank you guys for the clarity of that one, because I had concerns that this was going to be a long discussion.
But we had a long, we had worked through that this morning, trying to figure out exactly what was going on.
We spent a lot of time on this.
The last, the last meeting I came to, like, we were asking, I think, 15 feet to change the setbacks for the shop, and we just realized that that was just too big of a headache, so we just bought the lot next to us.
That works.
Bought what we needed.
That works out much better, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Next conditional use, C19-20, Jose Hernandez, Alpha and Omega, 2250 West Sunset, use unit 42, church synagogue in a C2, presented by Jose Hernandez.
Okay, I'm Pastor Jose Hernandez, and, uh, I've been pastoring for 16 years, and, uh, we're here to ask, uh, permission to use our unit or, uh, place on 2250 West Sunset in Springdale. And, uh, we are planning to use the place for at least four hours a week. Today, two hours on Sunday from 10 to 12 o'clock, and, uh, we ask you to give us an opportunity to, to help the community. Right now, we have, and study bibles in houses. We are like probably five families, and we're looking a place to have a service on Sunday, so... We'll see what would you say about it.
Staff comments?
The ingress and egress to this property is acceptable. The off-street parking, uh, it's really unknown based on previous, uh, operations at this location with a similar church going in there. There were parking problems. There's just not enough parking. The refuge and service areas is acceptable. The utilities are acceptable. Screening and buffering in the past was a issue with problems with adjacent property owners. Additional screening or buffering was not proposed. Uh, noise was a problem when there was a church there previously. Uh, we don't know about the sign. They didn't submit any information on that. Generally, we see this as unacceptable based on past experience of a church being at this location. Like a parking and the noise ordinances, problems we'd had in the past.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience?
Andy, do you have a comment?
You know-
To the commission.
I'm just gonna say, we, we had a conditional use of more than one church there in the past, and the sound in that building carries, and there's apartments and houses, and every single time we've had that use in that building.
Mm-hmm.
These are people that want to sleep in on Sunday morning. Noise has always been an issue, and then, in the end, even though there was those hours, they're tended to also become events at night. But even on Sunday mornings, the noise was an issue withholding a congregation. You know, that building was not designed noise-wise for that, and we have each time had to-
Alright.
And we've had problems that, when we've had some-
Does it, does it meet the parking requirement for a, for an assembly like that?
Well, we don't know how big the, I don't know, did, did the fire department or somebody get an occupancy limit for them?
Because to me, that, without, without considering, you know, holding them to pass people, just the parking doesn't look to me like they're-
The parking is very limited for that location?
Yeah.
I'm in, I didn't hear the- I'm in.
Oh, from Danny Wright, same comments I already made.
Okay.
Noise.
Noise.
Noise and parking were the two issues that we'd had at this location previously.
Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler.
No.
Compton.
No.
David.
No.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
No.
Parker.
No.
Parsley. Peters.
No.
This does not pass 8-0.
The conditional use is denied. You have the right to appeal the decision to the planning commission. You have to file your appeal within 15 days.
Okay.
To the clerk's office, indicating why you think the planning commission's decision was in error.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next section, preliminary plat, 19-03, Sundance subdivision, south of Julio Road, west of Butterfield Coach Road, presented by Bates and Associates. Sorry to make you guys have to come back up on this. It's, it was just quite a few things that were before it.
We're proposing 72 lots, 3.6 units, or lots per acre. You can see the plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Staff comments?
Uh, street names will need to be provided and approved prior to final plat acceptance. Please indicate any utility, existing utility easements, as well as adjacent off-site easements to the plat. The dimension shown requires planning commission approval. The width proposed of the streets does not have accommodations for on-street parking. It requires a 35-foot setback in accordance with the master street plan. Also, all new local street.
I'm sorry, those are not the most up-to-date comments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You want to do the most up-to-date ones, then?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's-
Okay.
He's got them right here. It's just the, it had the contingency of the rezone, so, you know, this was ultimately contingent upon the rezone you guys approved earlier. The, uh, street names, which is just a standard comment that we have, because we worked that out later on with GIS and, uh, and our, our county folks, and then just our standard boilerplate comment, and then we had the engineering comments in the bottom. I don't know if you want me to give these to you, Pat, so you can look at these.
Well, Debbie needs to make sure she gets them so that they get into the minutes. So, we've taken care of labeling the common areas, and all the comments from utility companies must be addressed, and no, there aren't any outstanding engineering comments, then?
Um, just the ones that we have on there right now are all, we're showing it for your copy. Uh, this is, uh, if you'll notice, a little different. This is from your, uh, work on the master street plan with your design standards and everything. You'll notice trees are, and it has a landscape strip. Um, the lane is a 21 feet wide, very narrow, so a lot narrower than, uh, most of our other subdivisions. This will be like the second one that we've had. Um, a little bit more of a green space, a little bit more of a sidewalk pulled back. Um, no parking in the street, setback is 35 feet, so it's a greater setback with less cars, and hopefully that'll, that'll change. Hopefully, these standards that we put into play with the last couple of years will have some effect on the neighborhoods around there, so, but I think with the addition of the trees, it should look pretty good.
And the whiteout spaces are near a fire hydrant, so that a fire truck has a way, place to pull-
Yeah, this is the unintended consequences of, uh, fire code and everything with our planning, you know. It's just where you have to have fire hydrants, you have to have the widening, and, uh, I think that's just one of those, those things that you can't avoid, so it does look a little bit different. But, uh, that narrowing of that streetscape, a little bit different design, should look a little different in Springdale, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
How come Julio Road stops short of the west property line?
Why does it stop short?
Yeah.
I guess just to take it back in, I don't know. We can extend it all the way over.
Well, I, I think that would be a requirement, would it not? You got it extended to the property line?
I'm sure it got misunderstood, and they just didn't want to go across that easement because Fayetteville said, "Do not do anything in that easement," so-
Well, it, it has to provide access-
There's a road there, yeah.
Because there's a house over there, so it-
We'll just extend it onto the west.
So, if it, if it's extended, then we meet the requirement. That's fine.
Okay.
Property line, yeah.
That's not an issue.
Let's be a recommendation.
Motion- Motion to approve with the added comment on the extension of the street.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
And subject to all staff comments. Compton.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Preliminary plat passes 8-0.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Next section, large-scale development, L19-18, Oscar Hall Marital Trust, southwest corner of Old Wire Road and Jefferson. There is also a variance for deviate, deviation of commercial design standards. Building materials with a majority of metal allow west facades to remain as shown. All 100% of parking to be within the front facade. Presented by Tom Lumstrom and ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. Um, we're proposing, uh, 16, approximately 16,000 square foot office warehouse, um, for this location. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Well, this is an industrial zone piece of property, but they are building a trades and services type building, so we're meeting commercial design standards for this building because it's a commercial building in an industrial zone property to the, west of it is owned I-2, so it backs up to an industrial area. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The, um, utility wires have to be underground. They are requesting a variance that no more than 60% of the off-street parking area for the entire property shall be located between the front facade, the front yard, and the primary, primary budding street. Basically, you're putting this where it has the fire lane to the west and all the parking is in the front?
Yes, that's correct.
Provide a unified lighting plan for this development, and the other, uh, variance request is the predominant exterior building materials, as well as accents, should be compatible with the surrounding area, not include the following smooth place. I'm not going to go through all that list. Basically, you're talking about the portion that's on the west side that butts up to the industrial area to remain all metal on that side. The, uh, improvements are done on the east side and on the north end and the south end?
Yeah, that kind of wraps it, well, about halfway.
Okay, that's what they're proposing. Uh, there's just, I don't think there's any outstanding engineering comments that need to be addressed. I think this one's pretty well. I'll take care of, with standard comments for that, too.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
I just want to comment that normally I would really prefer a 360-degree design standard, but because it does back on the industrial-
Sure, I mean, we, we understood that. I mean, you know, it backs up to H&amp;E equipment with those, their rental equipment back there. We're, we are providing a landscape area back there as well, um, somewhat of a screen there.
Any other comments from the commission?
Well, I, I'm a little concerned that if you're driving east down Randall Woby, that you will see the north end of that west facade. So, I, I just wonder if there's, if we couldn't go 20% down that facade with similar improvements, so that every area of the roadway, you get a nice view of a building and not the back of an industrial. Know what I'm talking about, Jason?
Yeah, I think I get-
Just that north side, north end of this building, and I don't know what's appropriate, maybe two bays there that would be-
On the, on the west side?
On the west side. Just so when I'm going down east on Randall Woby, I'm not looking at a big metal wall.
I was trying to think of some way we could do that with landscaping, maybe, you know, just plant some extra trees, some, like a greenery out there, evergreens or something to try to screen that instead of doing those improvements to the facade. You know, I've got some area there. Yeah, we do have a driveway on that north side, but I've got a couple, I've got a little bit of area there. We could add some landscaping.
Any other comments? So, do the variance first.
Okay, but let's, let's talk about this proposal. Is that something you're willing to entertain? Do you want to leave the variance just as is?
I mean, I've got room for two or three trees. Evergreen trees in that corner on the, if we go back to the site plan, I-
Jason, I'm sorry, man, we'll have to look at it. I hate to do this right here, but I just, we were looking at that, and I was talking to Austin, and, uh, I mean, we do have that two pedestrian entrance requirement for the adjacent streets. Somehow, we didn't get that in there, so that's staff's fault on that, um, for what Ben is talking about. You're talking about the north side of the building, right, Ben?
I'm, I'm talking about the north end, but the west facade.
Yeah.
Just, just the very front where it's visible from Randall Woby, if you're eastbound.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be something that you would have to ask the commission for modification on that. I don't know how, if staff wasn't clear on that, or we just missed that. That would be on us for that one, but typically-
They don't have any pedestrian access point on the north.
Right.
Is there a door there or not?
And that would have kind of changed that kind of facade and the way it looks to what you're talking about, to kind of have some dynamic change on that end, and, uh-
But I think he's, he's talking about the west side, right?
Yeah, but even then, like, if you had pedestrian entrance on that side, I think it would change the dynamic, so, um-
I mean, it looks like there's a door on the north elevation.
Yeah.
On this one drawing, you have a whole line of trees on the west side, right?
Yeah.
Uh, it goes all the way, all the way up and down the building, the whole side.
Austin, can you go back to the site plan?
There was just a, a larger gre, it looked like a larger green area right on Randall-Wolby there, that we missed a couple, we could add a couple plannings right there, is what I was, right there in the northeast, northwest corner.
So, you're, you would be putting, you're proposing putting landscaping in that corner to screen that, so when you come down Randall-Wolby, you don't see the backside of the buildings, is that what, that's what you're talking about?
That's, that's my proposal, yes.
You're talking that area, and then those trees that are there would continue with the trees that you have on there?
You're good with the screening? That way versus a?
Well, it's, it's certainly better than just let a wall.
We can plant, we, we can do low impact, low stuff, okay.
Yeah, we're just, we're just, there was a, I think there's a utility easement over there, so we're just, we'd have to work with like an understory or like a low-impact kind of screening, if that was what was going to go on there.
Well, oh, as far as from landscaping, that's not really going to apply the purpose that you want to put into that.
Yeah.
So, what you're recommending is, is that there's something changed as far as the, the building itself right there, as far as a?
But I'm one vote.
I, no, I know, I'm just saying.
I understand, this is just my opinion, my opinion.
Well, I mean, we've, we've had some where they've added like wainscoting or across through the line of, but the front of this building... I'm not sure how.
You're not requesting as far as a?
It's fairly industrial as well, so.
You're, you're not requesting a huge expense to be generated off of this, just the consistency that brings that around, because the intent is to keep.
Right, just to make it look like a commercial building if you're on the public right-of-way.
So, I think we're open to options, and I'm, I'm in agreement with you on this, I think we're option, options, can I be, I don't know that we have to fully plan it.
Where maybe the first and, first and possibly second bay had similar look to what the, the east side of the building had, is that what you're saying?
That would be my dream, yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to other ideas, but.
And, and we, and, and we have asked for that, I know we did some on Fortieth Street, several on Fortieth Street where we've required that, and it just, it just adds.
Okay, so what are we changing in the variance here?
I personally don't see, if I'm driving down that road, and I'm paying attention to traffic, and I look that direction, I'm basically going to see that tree line before I notice the buil, the building on the west side, I don't see a problem.
Well, that's what they said on Fortieth Street, and I can promise you, even going, I think a third of the way down the building, you can see all the way down.
I would, I don't know, I'd have to go to Fortieth Street and let's check that out, but here, I don't see a problem.
So, Jason, it's up to you guys, I mean, you can go as indicated as far as the variance here, or?
Yeah, we'll leave it as presented.
Okay. So, this would be a call for the vote, based on leaving it the way it is?
And that's both variances together, which is the hundred percent of the parking in that building as, as submitted, okay?
Want to take them together or separate? Want to take them separate, so, we're taking deviation of commercial design standards, building materials with the majority of them metal, um...
Just in the end, say.
Okay.
So, call for the vote on A?
A and B.
N, B.
Okay.
A and B, together, okay.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Uh, the first variance for A and B passes seven-one, and then variance for C, all a hundred percent parking to be within the front facade, I have a call for the vote on that.
Call for the vote on C.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney?
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
That passes eight-zero, and then we have large scale. This would be a motion.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
From by Mrs. Haney? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Board of Adjustments, B-19-44, Rebecca Chavez, 907 South Pleasant, variance for deviation of front setback from thirty feet to twenty feet, presented by Rebecca Chavez.
I don't think she's here.
Okay. Uh, next item, B-19-46, Bay Arkansas, uh, nineteen oh nine West Huntsville Avenue, variance for deviation of paved parking with a two-year bill of assurance, presented by Bay Arkansas. Hi.
Hi, my name is Sally Williams, I'm the executive director of Bay Arkansas, and we're here today to apply for a variance to allow us to retain a gravel, um, area at the back of our paved parking lot, it is sixty-four by fifty-three feet.
Staff comments?
You're asking for a two-year bill of assurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Why do you need two years?
Um, to determine what we're going to do with, if we're going to continue operating in this facility or not. Um, currently, we operate two to three days a week, providing services, um, for animals from low-income community members. Um, we are at a point where we have grown, we have about nine people that work with us on the days that we're working there. Um, as our operations continue to develop and our programs continue to develop, you know, it could be that in two years' time, we, we may not still be interested in operating out of this facility. There is also the possibility that we would want to apply to pave it at that point in time if we were going to continue providing services in this facility, we're just not really sure what the best route to take is at this point.
You own the facility?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
I, I think two years is a long amount of time, I know, and sometimes when you have events, there's a lot of people at your location, you bring in a lot of people, a lot of cars.
On, on our vaccine clinic days, yes.
It, it, it's a packed area, so, two years is a long time.
Would you consider one?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, you would be willing to change that to a one year?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So, this is, um, I, I guess, I just want to make one comment, if you're going with the one year, that you need to make preparations for what you're going to do at the end of that one year.
Right, my, my understanding is by the end of that one year, we would have to determine if we wanted to apply to pave it or to remove the gravel, correct?
Because, yeah, because in general, for me, if you get at the end of the year, it should be paved, and if it's not, you ought to have the plan and the timeline ready of when it's actually going in and the design basically done, versus just having an extension.
Right, right.
And having not done it.
We're, we're a non-profit organization, and right now, what my responsibility is, is trying to be a good steward with the resources that the community donates to us, and, you know, a, a knee-jerk reaction right off the bat to spend twenty thousand dollars to get the surveys done, and pave it did not seem to be good stewardship with our donations, considering the fact that, yes, there is one day a month that there is heavy traffic there, the rest of the time, there is not.
Correct, so what I would recommend is that you get that started soon, don't wait till a year from now.
Correct.
And not have had those discussions.
Okay.
And I'll make a call for the vote on that.
Be a motion, recommendation? I have a motion by Mrs.
This is actually a call for, call for, for the vote, if she's willing to reduce it to a one.
Okay. Call for vote by Mrs. Haney?
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
Uh, you need to come by the office, and we'll get you a bill of assurance that can be filled out, and it has to be filed as a lien on the property.
Okay, thank you.
She needs to call first, because I have to get, do the legal description.
Okay, yeah, you need to call first, don't, don't show up first thing in the morning, we won't be ready, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, uh, B-19-48, Taldo Properties, 503 Old Missouri Road, variance for deviation of commercial design standards, roof change in height every one hundred linear feet, materials and colors, predominant exterior materials and high-quality materials, presented by ESI.
My name is Steve Sanders, and I represent Taldo Properties.
Staff comments?
Uh, basically, we have, you know, we, we looked at this once before, we did the variance on the parking all in the front, basically, they have taken and added, uh, materials on the backside and on the both ends of the building, and, uh, submitted information about the type of metal to be used. Do you have the color?
It's, it's.
Oh, okay.
The drive that he's giving him.
Okay. Now, this one is a C-two zone, it is a commercial building in a C-two zone that backs up to P-one property, backs up to the, uh, Roosevelt Greenway, uh, so that's, you know, a little bit different than backing up to an industrial.
Patsy, I can hand this around while he's loading that.
That'd be great. Do that, that's fine.
So, the materials and the colorization would be a three-sixty?
Yeah, one of the vari, is the roof change in height every hundred feet, linear feet, in the front it changes, but in the, in the rear?
In, in the rear, the, the rear has a parapet, and, and it doesn't change in height, but we are changing the direction of the siding used to kind of break it up that was shown on the elevation, if you go back to the black and white elevation, it shows that.
And then it, it is also to cover the, can I have a units on the roof?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, the parapet acts as a screening as well.
Okay.
And, so that rendering there doesn't show the break in vertical height as the one I just passed around. My apology, the one that was on my flash drive was an earlier version.
Comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So, so is the backside that has all, the visibility on the Greenway, is it, how different is it from this?
It's, it's really not, other than it doesn't have the, the overhead doors and the entrance canopies, the backside has the same stone wainscot brick treatment, the same vertical stone, the same colorization of the metal siding, it's got, uh, personnel doors out the back that have awnings over the personnel doors, and again, on the black and white elevation right there, it's vertically oriented, but the center elevation is the rear.
So, it's, see, it has those breaks in it with, it has the stone that comes up between them.
The stone goes up to where the, the parapet, uh, there, so the, the stone goes up to where the parapet siding direction changes to kind of break that up, since the vertical height of the rear parapet doesn't change, but you see the stone wainscot all the way around with the vertical pillars on the division lines between the units, and then the, uh, the personnel doors with the, uh, projected awnings over them.
So, we're, so the request for A has to do with the rear of the building, is that right? Because the front of it is in compliance.
Right, well.
Because of the, the front of it is, this is, this right here is in compliance.
That's what it's going, but you take the building as a whole for the predominant material to be, and so, with that on the front, the way it's designed, they're asking for it to be approved based on what this looks like.
Okay, so the, but then, I don't understand, what, what is B, why, why is what I'm looking at?
Well, now, you're proposing a different kind of metal than what we originally.
We're, we're using, we're using a metal siding, it's referred to as, as a M-lock, as opposed to the R-lock, which is what we predominantly see on metal buildings, it's more of an architectural profile.
There should be a cut sheet in the file.
M-lock or R-lock, which one?
The M-lock, I've got a picture of that, too.
There should be a, a cut sheet in the file, too, I looked at this morning.
So.
It's a little different version.
So, this is the M-lock profile.
Does it have exposed fasteners, or it's, it's hidden?
It, it will have exposed fasteners in the valley, but the profile itself isn't the, the expansive flat with the smaller rib like a typical R-lock, it's a undulating, larger profile.
So, this is my, my only problem on the, when I'm looking at the justification or the request on here, the justification for why you need to use that is literal interpretation of design standards would not be suitable to an office warehouse use as proposed, which is not true, right, because that's the standard for this kind of building, that's the whole point of the ordinance, so, I just don't, I just, I'm having trouble why, um, what the hardship is, you know what I'm saying? Because usually, for a variance, I know we try to look for a hardship or, you know, some kind of extenuating circumstance, but.
We've used the same material on other buildings that we've approved just recently, because it is a different standard, not your standard metal building look because of the, of the differences.
So, is it the, is it the metal that you're talking about, or the roof line, because?
No, I, the roof line, I get, my question is, one of two things is not, doesn't line up, right, either the ordinance doesn't account for this, which we should be allowing, or there's a reason why this is not included in, as a, as a?
I don't think that product probably existed when we wrote the standard.
Okay. Okay.
There's some newer metal products that are out there that we didn't have in, like, Children's Hospital has, um, Inwak has some of this metal, I, I think they use the same, I don't know that for fact, because I know just enough to be dangerous, I don't know all the details.
Well, that's just, again, I'm always just asking this so that we get it in why we're doing this, so if there's a, should we be allowing this all the time, and they wouldn't have to, you know, get a variance for it?
Well, one of the things that we need to look at, and there are several things in commercial design standards, we need to update the materials list, because when we wrote those many, many years ago, there's different materials being used now than it was.
So, is it just a matter of preference, is that the, uh, you know, that's what I'm trying to, because we had the other building on here earlier, you know, that had.
That the same material that you're using on the other?
It had metal, right, the, the other one? I don't, yeah, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to belabor, I just, that was my point, is that sometimes, you know...
What was, I mean, it's, I think it's a, an M-lock panel, um, well, this one, the majority of them were all, so the majority of the panels on the other one was the M-lock panel.
Majority of it was this?
Yeah.
And the majority of, well, all of the metal on this building will be that type of material.
To note, in future work sessions and things, those, we'll review that as part of the commercial design standards as we update. Peyton, did you have anything?
Well, I mean, I think we've kind of let some of these, and maybe we need to go look at how they've turned out, and if we're satisfied that they do fit the intent, right?
The other one I remember is the Rexall Building, Aaron, am I remembering the right, that's up there on Wagon Wheel Road? Is that one that we use that same kind of material on?
Yeah, I don't know, I may be wrong, but I, are we sure that the Children's Hospital uses the exposed fasteners?
I don't know that, I know that it's a different kind of metal, I don't know that it's the same as that.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Peyton, did you have any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. This a motion, or call for the vote?
Call for vote for, because it's a variance request.
Are we doing both together, or you want them separate? Have a preference?
He's looking at me? Are you looking at me?
I would say both together myself, but.
I, I, I'm okay to take them together, I just want to, you know, I think we need to get clear on that.
Okay, call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
A and B together.
On both A and B for this, okay?
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Last item is waiver nineteen dash zero seven, Taldo Fourplex, east side of Goodenstown, south of McMillan Drive, waiver, street improvements, presented by ESI.
Actually, this is the Griffin Fourplex, this is not the Taldo Fourplex.
Yeah, I was confused, because I had.
It's actually the Griffin one.
Griffin Fourplex.
This was a non-large scale, they brought in the.
Thanks.
Master Street Plan, says this is a major collector. The street has been widened out to minor collector standards, they're asking for a waiver of street and sidewalk improvement requirements to widen out that section of North Goodenstown Road.
Okay, any questions or comments?
They are dedicating the right-of-way, though.
Questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
That lot used to have an older house sitting way back in the, in the back part of it, and they are building more fourplex, that's this problem, as a non-large scale.
So the street improvements were for?
The street was built as a?
Minor collector.
Minor collector, it's.
Yes, it's a minor, I was thinking was it a bond program, I was, it's a minor collector.
It was CIP.
It was a CIP project built as minor collector standards, but it is actually shown on the master street plan as a major collector. They're willing to donate the right-of-way, but not, they're asking not to have to tear out that little portion of the street and widen it out.
Okay, but the right-of-way will be donated?
Yes, so dedicate the right-of-way for it.
And is this a motion or?
Yeah, because you're making a recommendation to council.
So I'll make a motion for it to council with a recommendation of approval.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.